So, welcome everybody to the St. Louis Park School Board Meeting on January 27th. All of us braved the weather and we made it and we're happy to be here and we're happy to have you with us. We've got lots of our teachers with us for the start of the meeting, so welcome. And we have a few other folks. And one of those other folks is what we're going to start with tonight, and that's our Spotlight Award for Larry Shapiro, who served on the school board for eight years. We asked him to come back so he could recognize and honor his service, and that's what we're going to do right at the start. Larry, thank you so much for serving on the school board. Sometimes it feels like a thankless task. So, we're really glad that you let us invite you back to thank you for eight years to the school board and to the city of St. Louis Park. Larry began his service to the city and our schools years before he got on the school board. He has a long history of volunteering. He graduated from St. Louis Park, and look how well he did. He has three children who graduated from St. Louis Park. He began, and, well, his students went to Aquila where he first met Rob Metz, his children did. And then at Cedar Manor, he was on the site council. He chaired it for at least two years and was on it for longer. He has been a rep to the District Parent Advisory Council. He was on the Strategic Planning Committee. He's been on our Budget Committee. And he has served on the school board for eight years. He ran for reelection the first time, and the second time after eight years, he said it's time for somebody else. And so, we welcomed Karen to the board. And he did not choose to run the last time. Larry has 20 years of experience as a financial executive in the business world, and he brought that to us. And I want everybody watching to know what a gift that has been, in addition to his caring and his insight over the years. He had a way of taking complicated financials and translating them for those of us who aren't financial wizards, so that not only I could understand it, speaking for myself, but so could our community when we were trying to explain some things that were sometimes difficult. Larry was with us when we had to struggle through some more difficult budgeting years, including reconfiguring the district. And at those community meetings, Larry was just a gift in helping us walk together through that process. Larry didn't always talk a lot when he was on the school board, but when he spoke, we all listened, because you always had the right question, the right insight, the right comment to help improve the discussion and improve the decision-making. And so, we are very grateful for all that you have given us and all that you have given the district. He kind of echoes, exemplifies some of the 40 assets from Children's First, and the two that I would highlight is "Community Values Youth." When somebody takes the time out of their busy life to come here, it shows how much they value our youth, and I hope our students hear that. It also is a great adult role model, and that is another one of the children's assets, and I think, Larry, you've exemplified that throughout, so thank you for that. So, I am going to give you the Spotlight Award. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And give you a chance to say something.
I guess I really didn't expect this big of a crowd for this. It was really my pleasure to serve eight years on the school board in St. Louis Park. As Nancy said, I went to school here, my kids went to school here. It was a strong district when I got on the board eight years ago. It's still a strong district, and I'm sure that, given everything that everybody does for this district, the teachers, the family members, the board, it will remain a strong district in the future, and I look forward to seeing it grow. Thank you very much.
Before Larry goes, I want, I'm going to do it, I'm sorry, she's giving me the dagger eye, but I want to acknowledge Larry's wife, Michelle, because he's here, not at home, and so, I want to thank you for letting him serve us. Thank you.
I think we should also acknowledge the tact that the board has. So, Larry has a talent for baking. So, when we have board retreats or something, Larry would show up with a cake. So, we wisely invited Larry with the stipulation that he bring a cake to his retirement party, and we got to enjoy that just before. So, Larry, thanks for your service. Thanks for all you've done. We'll miss you.
Now, I'm going to call our board meeting to order. And on our agenda tonight, we have approval of the agenda, we have open forum, we have the superintendent's report, then we have several discussion items. Those are the school board listening sessions, the all-day kindergarten update, the World's Best Workforce update, Peter Hobart Construction update, 2014 budget amendments discussion, final bidding results for sale of general obligation school building bonds, Series 2014A. We have the consent agenda and the action agenda. And on the action agenda, we have approval of the 2014 budget amendments and approval of resolution for sale of general obligation school building bonds, Series 2014A, and award of bid, followed by communications and transmittals, and then adjournment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
It's moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's 6-0. So, the first item on the agenda is open forum, and I have one yellow sheet, and that's from Kevin Jones and Richard.
Good evening Superintendent Metz and Board Chair Gorts and other school board members. A big good evening to that huge sea of orange out there also.
Hey, Dick.
Yeah, Kev?
Would you riddle me a riddle?
Okay, Batman, I'll riddle you a riddle. What's 5,040 hours?
I don't know, Dick. What is 5,040 hours?
Gotcha. We'll try this one. What's 210 days?
I don't know, Dick. What is 210 days?
Gotcha again. Well, the answer to both of these riddles is that's how long that you and I have been working without a contract.
Well, that's over half a year.
Yeah, Kev, and speaking of years, happy 2014.
Well, thanks, Dick. It's January, the beginning of a new year. This is the time when families begin to budget, change their W-2s, start to take into consideration how much they're spending on medical, dental, etc.
Kevin, would you start a job without knowing what you're going to be compensated? That is, not knowing what your wage or benefits would be?
Probably not.
Well, so, is it just me, or do you and others feel a bit uncomfortable working under our current conditions? That is, working under our old contract, not really knowing what our current compensation is?
It's not just you, Dick, it's all of us. That's why we're here. We're disappointed that the negotiations has labored on for so long.
Well, Kev, we certainly have had, we have not had a timely settlement this year, but I sure hope that we will have a fair and equitable one.
Yeah, Dick, in a year where the enrollment's up and the budget's up, we're hoping to be settled, we were hoping to be settled up months ago.
Yeah. Kevin, in a time when the district has so many great things happening, one would think that a new contract would have been settled on months ago.
I agree, Dick. In closing, negotiators keep meeting, keep meeting with positive intentions, keep meeting with realistic offers, and keep meeting with open minds.
Our enrollment is up, our budget is up, so let's get this done and let's settle up. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
And that was Kevin Jones and Dick Plants, who are, got that pronounced right, I hope, are the teacher union representatives, and we appreciate your sharing your concerns with us. We know that these are no doubt being discussed in the negotiation sessions that are ongoing, and I think we all share the same goal, a fair and equitable settlement. We may see it differently at the moment, but, you know, negotiation is closing the gaps, and so, I have full faith and confidence that that is what's going to happen as we move forward. So, thank you for coming. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to use my time tonight to speak about the cold weather and school closings and rescheduleings. For those of you in the audience and at home, and for board members, just a quick recap. We're all, as we all know, going through a very challenging cold, cold winter, and we've missed quite a few days of snow. Today, we missed, or, school due to the cold. Today, we missed school, and all of our evening activities were canceled. Tomorrow, we're going to miss school again, but we are going to run our after-school and evening activities tomorrow, both athletics and non-athletics. Kids' Place is now open, as of yesterday, during the day at Central and Lennox and at our elementary schools. And our community ed programs are operating. Cedar Manor specifically and Lennox are open, so that the tenants that are using those buildings can use those buildings. We were planning to send report cards home with elementary students on January 31st. That is now going to be moved back to February 5th. We do need to make up a couple of days. We need to make up today, and we need to make up tomorrow. So, we have two days to reschedule. We're looking at dates right now, and we're going to bring stakeholders and district leaders together to determine the best way to accomplish that. We consider many factors when closing school, some of which include, most importantly, student safety. We really need to make sure that every single student is able to get to school in a safe manner. Part of that is bus transportation, making sure the buses are operating and get to where they need to be on time, making sure that walkers, who have to walk a considerable distance, can get to school safely. We use the information from the National Weather Service to make our decisions, and we consult with school districts all around the metro area. We understand that closing these days of school has been a hardship to families and has caused problems for our staff as well. We just ask patience from everybody. We're doing our best to make sure that we get these days of school made up and that students are safe. This summer, we'll be sitting down and creating a school closing policy and looking at all of our procedures that we've been using to date. I can tell you one thing I've learned, both good and maybe not so good, but mostly good, is that parents are very appreciative to know in advance what the plans are going to be. They really appreciate knowing 24 hours in advance what to plan for. The downside of that is then you rely on forecasts. You know, if you're going to make a decision a day early, you need to rely on forecasts, and sometimes they're right and sometimes they're not right. So, we've done our best, and I can say the feedback that I've gotten has been mostly positive, and people are coming down on the side of making sure everybody is safe and making the decision in a timely manner. So, again, we'll be looking at how to best make up these two days we've lost. We have some ideas. We'll bring people around the table, and we'll make those decisions, and we'll move forward. So, thank you to everyone involved for your patience, and we'll work through this.
Thank you, Rob. Next on the agenda, we have discussion items, and the first item is the school board listening sessions, and Julie's going to give us a rundown on those. Julie, why don't we wait about 30 seconds to the beers home? Next on the agenda, we have school board listening sessions.
All right. Glad to talk about these. We've started doing listening sessions quite a few years ago, and I think it's been an important part of our year-long experience. So, the idea behind the listening sessions is to have two or three board members, so it's not a formal meeting, and a chance for a little more interaction. So, we're there as individual board members, none, no one of us can speak for the board, that's always true. It's an opportunity, not a mandate, for anybody to be there, so if we've been there for half an hour and nobody's shown up, we figure that everything's hunky-dory in that corner of the world, and we will leave. But we will honor those that are there and give everybody a chance to speak about whatever's on their mind, and we will adjourn about an hour and a half after we start. I think we've been successful in the past that these sessions have had a lot of civil discussion, respectful engagement in the issues that were being raised. Our first one is going to be Monday, February 3rd, so that's next Monday. I'm looking at Bruce, because Bruce and I will be there, I believe, along with Ken, but Monday, February 3rd, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Aquila. So, Aquila, 6:30 p.m., Monday, February 3rd. We'll also do one in March. We're trying to schedule a number of meetings, including one with city council, so we're not sure of that date. And then, I believe, we just settled on April 26th, which is a Saturday, at Central at, I think, 10:30, but these will all be posted on the website, so that anybody who's interested can look there, and we'll mention them at the board meeting prior to that listening session as well, so you'll be able to see it either live or on the repetition of these board meetings. So, again, there should be three. The first one's February 3rd. We'll do one later in March, and one at the end of April, and we look forward the chance to talk with everybody.
Thank you, Julie. And then, next on the agenda is the all-day kindergarten update, and that, this is going to be from Director of Teaching and Learning, Carrie Ross, and Lisa Green. I was looking, I'd have known that, Lisa, I was looking down.
Good evening Superintendent Metz, Chair Gorts, and members of the board. We're just here to tell you what we've done since the last school board meeting, and I just want to point out up here on the screen, this is information that was sent home to potential kindergarten families last week, and what it has is information about kindergarten and a sample schedule down here at the bottom. You can see that, it's hard, kind of hard to see on there. I don't know why this, it's kind of weird, I don't know what's going on there. Down here at the bottom, this is telling parents how to, if they want the half-day option, what to do there. And then, on the back, it has information about, there are two options, all-day or half-day, K and frequently asked questions, and this is the, I don't know what's going on with that, sorry.
Should we put that underneath, so it doesn't, is that easier?
No, well, a little bit, yeah, it's better. This is just a, this is just what the application looks like. So, you can see, it's a very simple application, would take anybody about two minutes to fill out, and they have three ways of sending it back to the district, either by email, fax, or, four ways, they could bring it in person, or they could mail it in with the U.S. mail.
So, just to clarify, this is the, excuse me, application for half-day kindergarten. And not only do they have multiple ways, if parents are interested in the half-day program, they have multiple ways of returning the application. They can also pick it up at any of the elementary schools, at Central Community Center, or here at the district office. And that brings us right back to the timelines. An important date to remember for application for half-day kindergarten will be January 31st, this Friday, the kindergarten applications are due. Later this week, too, we launch the kindergarten task force. I'm going to have to borrow this, because I can't read this far away. February 7th is the PSI kindergarten application deadline for residents at 4:00 p.m. that day in early March. There will be school notification letters and roundup invitations mailed to families, and then, March 18th will be kindergarten roundup and registration at each of our elementary schools at 6:00 p.m. So, a lot of communication has gone out to our families recently. We love the little kindergarten logo that we've been using for all of our communications, so when families see that in the mail, they know that it is specific to kindergarten, and that's where we are today. All right, we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the World's Best Workforce update. I think they just left.
I am here to present some initial information regarding the World's Best Workforce. You're going to be hearing that term a lot, and tonight's presentation is just meant to be a general introduction into the topic, and as board members, you're going to become much more familiar with the World's Best Workforce as we move into the future. Think of the World's Best Workforce as an umbrella that encompasses everything we do in the district regarding academics. The Minnesota Department of Education is looking toward creating, taking all of the varied plans and initiatives that a school district has, and encompassing them under one umbrella, and that umbrella is called the World's Best Workforce. The idea is that our job is to prepare students to become part of the workforce in the future, and they need to be college and career-ready. They need to be ready to enter a college in good academic standing, or to be ready to enter a career or a technical field when they leave our school district. So, that's where the World's Best Workforce comes from. And again, think of it as an umbrella that encompasses everything we do in a district. When we say World's Best Workforce, that means these things. We are striving to have all students meet school readiness goals. One of the things we're going to be doing in all-day kindergarten task force is decide what "ready for kindergarten" means. We're going to have all third graders to the future. There are lots of questions about the World's Best Workforce Plan, because it's new, and whenever there's anything new, there's a lot of guidance that needs to come from the Minnesota Department of Education. There are many questions involved. We're gradually learning the answers to those questions, and it's making more and more sense all the time. So, there's a process to go through, and all districts are going through that process right now. So, with that, I will stand for questions, and Carrie Ross on the side over there is going to help me answer some of these questions. So, are there any questions I can help you with?
Well, just a couple, a narrow one and one a little more interesting, I think. You know, we're striving to have all students meet school readiness goals, and yet, they don't have a lot of identified school readiness goals at the state level, do they? I mean, that's what we're going through now, is trying to determine that on our own.
Actually, in 2012, there was a school readiness study that gave us a lot of direction, so with the Race to the Top Early Learning Initiative, the federal money that we received last year, there will be more and more of those pieces in place, especially for high-quality rated preschools and those types of things, which we have already in our community, that will help support that school readiness piece.
And my broader observation is it really just looks like it's just strategic planning. I mean, it's just kind of forcing for maybe districts that don't do it. We've, I think, have done a good job of looking at it and updating it, and we've done it in maybe a little different way with World Cafes and groups and how we created our mission, but it doesn't strike me as really new, and, you know, I think, like you said, I think we're doing a lot of the stuff that's just being mandated now, is my first blush.
We are. We're doing, almost every one of these components, we're already involved in, but it's causing us to package them, and it's causing every district to package them differently and to align them.
Theoretically, we were already trying to get aligned with board goals, super technical goals, and our strategic plan and how to do that.
Definitely. I think it's actually a very good fit for us. It's following exactly where we are heading, where we've been and where we're going.
No new additional resources, and, I mean, we've already been doing this type of thing, so.
We have been.
Yeah.
Yes, I think sometimes when I see these laws that get passed, sometimes it's like, do you think we've never thought about integrating high-quality instruction? And obviously, there's a lot more that we can always get much better in many of these areas, but I do like that you were talking about melding everything together and putting it in a coherent, more of a coherent whole. And you talked about strategic plan, and I know there's a lot of people in our community that have vested a lot of time and energy in developing our existing plan, but I think they also, which you're building into this, but I think they also know we're about due to revisit that whole process again, and so, I'm glad you brought that up, so that people know both we're honoring what we have, but we always look at that as we always did with the plan. You revisit it every year or so, and we'll take a solid look at whether, at developing our strategic plan again this spring.
Correct, yes.
I know I didn't say that well, but it's both, we're not just stopping and throwing something out and starting from scratch. We're building on what we've been doing and then adding what we need to add.
Rob, I, one of the questions that may come up is people at home look at this. We have two of the best pieces or ways to present education in the world. Our immersion education is par excellence. Our IB education is perhaps the best in the world. So, taking those locally and packaging those up into this format, I think will lend to what you've been talking about, about how our brand is put together, and it will give us an opportunity to say it in just the way it needs to be said. With that said, I want to thank Carrie for her inputs. Having Carrie Ross here, I mean, to answer that specific question that Jim raised, coming from MDE and making sure that we are aligned with Common Core, with all of the things that we need to be aligned with. When you see something like this, it just looks like a ton of work, and yet, just as you say, there's a lot of these things that we have been doing all along. Now, some of the things required of a board, quite frankly, the board's been doing, our board has been doing these things all along. So, this gives, I think it'll create some consistency throughout the state, but I agree, it's, there aren't a lot of things here that we haven't been doing all along. And then, when you look at our brand and you look at our IB and our immersion education, this is just one of the best places to be educated, and this will give us an opportunity to showcase that even more.
I like how you said that. It's going to let us take what we're doing and packaging and branding it a little bit differently and tweaking it along the way, so I agree very much with what you said, Bruce.
And, Rob, my recollection is that our strategic plan was a five-year plan, and we're coming to the end of the strategic plan that we had, so we'll probably be able to get an update on where we are with that, and then, as we segue either into this as a new strategic plan, or this dovetailing into some variation on a strategic plan. That'll be an interesting conversation for us to have as we begin to put flesh on the bones of what we think this means, this workplace plan.
Yes, you're correct. Our five-year strategic plan is in its fifth year, so this is coming along at a perfect time for us.
Thank you. This is exciting.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda, we have the Peter Hobart Construction Update. Sandy?
And it'll be just one moment as I get technology working.
Karen, Lisa, I had one question that I forgot to ask. I know that registration for the kindergarten is due for the half-day Friday. Have you received any yet, or how many?
We've only received a couple of applications so far, and they, one did come by email and the other one was in the U.S. mail.
Okay, thank you.
But the other thing is, the applications are online, too, so everybody has, that has access can get them that way, too.
Okay.
Go ahead.
This is something that we've been going through the last couple of board meetings, going through what the Peter Hobart Project update and where we're at at this point in time. Since I've done this presentation and redone it probably last week, it's probably changed a little bit since then, but I do have some pictures to share with all of you to show at least the latest and greatest. Since I've done this presentation and redone it probably last week, it's probably changed a little bit since then, but I do have some pictures to share with all of you to show at least the latest and greatest. A lot of progress has occurred at Peter Hobart Edition. If anybody has gone by there, you're going to see an addition. There's a lot of things that have been done, such as the footings and foundations have been completed, exterior concrete, backup block installed, upper floor, pre-cast floor, like, all these things that had to happen before, you're going to see something really happening. Steel stud wall framing has been completed, the slab has been completed. Outside bricks were being laid, and we did have a little bit of delay because of the weather. The weather not only caused school closing, but it did cause some construction issues, too, with the laying of the bricks. So we did set back a little bit because of that, but we're continuing to move on. Roof complete, ratso floor finishing completed. Last week and throughout this week, they're continuing on with a lot of the inside work. So you're going to see not only the outside finished, but for the most part, I think there's some flashing that needs to be done on the roofing piece. But other than that, the bricklaying is pretty much there. The roof, roofing has been completed with the exception of some tying in of the flashing. Painting of rooms continues on as we speak. Cabinet installation, windows installation is pretty much completed. We did have a little bit of setback with the carpet. Evidently, we can't blame it all on the weather, from what I heard, but part of it we can blame on the weather because the drying of the actual cement, it took a while, a little bit longer for it to dry. And the carpet companies don't necessarily warrant all the time up completely now when the floor isn't dry completely. So we got to make sure that their floor is dry before we get the carpet in place. So there's a little bit of a delay in that. We expect that to be completed by the first week of February next week. As I said, the frigid weather created some issues with the bricklaying, and we did have that carpet installation issue. But we do expect now, and I know this keeps on happening, but the first week of February, we anticipate that this is going to be completed. And when you see pictures, you'll be a little bit more at ease that things are really happening. Here's, this is probably about a week old already, but here's the outside of the project, and you'll see there's actually an addition. There's a little bit of, I guess, plastic covering part of it, but that's pretty much completed. Here's another angle of it with the windows showing the windows in place. Here's, I know this is probably harder to see on the screen than it is to see on the TV, but you'll see the classroom, the finishing of the ceiling, as well as the cabinetry is happening. And as soon as that carpet comes in, you're going to see a complete room. And here's some more of the cabinetry, as well as the look of what the classroom is and the windows. So there's a lot of completion happening, a little bit more to happen yet, but we continue on, and hopefully by that first week of February, things will be complete.
Got a question. So it seems to me that this has gone pretty quickly.
It was a very, as Wold would say, aggressive project to get done in this amount of time, but they've done a very good job at doing so.
So they're on schedule or?
I mean, we were hoping to get it done by January 1st. So, you know, we are behind schedule from what we originally thought. But, I mean, a lot of things happened with weather and so forth to make that happen.
So do we anticipate that Peter Hobart will be able to start using the space next week?
That's our hopes. I mean, there's going to be a punch list that's going to be happening to make sure that everything's been done that's supposed to be done. It's going to be that finishing, you know, the project up work. You know, the carpeting, we're still waiting on that to make sure that, you know, we don't lose our warranty on our carpet and make sure that everything's dry to the point that we can place that carpet.
So sometime in February is a realistic?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, our hopes are still that that first week of February, things are going to be pretty much done.
Well, thank you for the photos. It was really nice to see some of that.
We can thank Shelley for that. She did a great job at taking the photos.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the 2014 budget amendments. I suspect that's you, Sandy.
Having the same problem here. I don't know what you did to make that square go away, girls, but you could tell me what you did? Okay. Okay, it's a little foggy yet, but I think this is better than what it was. Here's the budget amendments for the current year, which is fiscal year 2014. This is normally what we do. We set our budgets in the springtime, when we don't necessarily know everything that we know now. So we adjust our budgets and bring it to the board for approval, which the board will have this on their approval. And what I have is a breakdown of what those budget amendments are. The first one is for the unassigned reserve, which is the reserve that we have in place to be used at our discretion. And it involves those expenses and revenues that support our operations. The general education aid, we had estimated with our Finance Advisory Committee before the budgets were put in place at 5,100 weighted average daily memberships. And when we took a look at the enrollment that occurred last year and the final enrollment, it actually was above that by about 96 weighted average daily membership. And knowing that we are actually a little bit over this year, at this point in time anyway, not saying what it's going to be at the end of the year, we're going to bring that up by that 96 weighted average daily membership to bring it up to $508,992.
Sandy, so was the recommendation last year that would keep flat student enrollment, was that, do we, I know we had predicted increases the year before, but I thought last year was flat?
Yeah, flat from what it was the previous year.
Previous year, we kept it flat, but in fact, it increased again.
It's grown. And we've been kind of conservative with this estimate, just because we don't know how far it's really going to grow up to and how long it's going to continue to grow. So we've been kind of conservative with our initial estimates, knowing that we're going to come back in January to adjust it. And knowing that at the end of the year, we'll have a better figure of what we're really going to be. We also increased our special education revenue by about $200,000. That's another thing that we're always conservative, that it's a revenue source, as Tammy and I always have these conversations about. It's hard to predict because it's always two years behind. You do the best that you can estimate, and the tuition expenses actually are subtracted out of there now, and we don't know sometimes that, there's always that cleanup that ends up happening. So we are very conservative, or, and I won't say very, but we are conservative in our initial estimates. And looking at last year's estimates from the state, it looks like we're going to be favorable in the amount of, that we have in our budgets for the special education revenue. So we're going to add $200,000 there. You'll see the grant revenue of $690,512. There's also an offsetting expense down in the expense column. So it's really neutral to our fund balance. And what this is, is just bringing our grants. When we do our budgets in the spring, we don't necessarily always have the grants available. We don't know what the dollar months are going to be at that point in time. So we come up and bring adjustments at this point in time to make it whole. Therefore, it's about 1.4 million of additional revenue that we're going to be adding to our budgets for your approval. And looking at the expenses for the unassigned reserve, the salary and benefits, we actually added approximately four FTEs net. We're netting it out to the savings that we have in benefits. So we actually had a little bit more FTEs in that, but it's adding basically the equivalent to four FTEs to come up to 300,000 of additional expenditures for those expenses. Utilities and electric, we're having a bad year. And utilities have been rising. We're expecting that it's going to increase in not only electric, but gas cost. It's just inevitable that it's going to happen this year, so we're going to put in 40,000 additional expenditures for that. Tuition, for regular tuition, even though it seemed like ALC kind of rose a little bit during the fall, we do feel that there's additional expenditures in there than what we're actually going to meet. So we're going to be decreasing that by 150,000 for overall regular tuition. And again, I said the grant expenses are going to meet the revenues, and therefore, all in all, we're going to have about a $519,000 increase to our unassigned reserve, bringing it from the 3.9 or almost the $4 million unassigned fund balance to a $4.48 million fund balance. Knowing that the auditors did require us to bring part of that unassigned reserve into the assigned fund balance because we had a deficit spending this year of that 1.3 million. So that will actually end up coming back probably into that unassigned reserve.
Anybody have any questions for Sandy?
And I got one more. Not only do we have the unassigned reserve, we have the assigned reserve. And there has been incentive at this point to use some of our literacy incentive funds for salaries for the remainder of the year, which will help to cover some of the initiatives for ELL and other issues that need to be addressed at, some of the elementaries, as well as the middle school and high school. And they'll decrease that reserve by 75,000, which there's about 577,000 in there right And that's all I have for you, unless there's any questions.
Doesn't look, looks like no questions. Sandy, you explained it very well. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the final bid results for the sale of general obligation school building bonds with Sandy and Joel Sutter.
And I'm just going to hand this one off to Joel because Joel did all the work in getting our bids for our bonds that we approved last referendum. And he has some good results for us, and I'll let him take over.
Thank you, Sandy. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Rob, it's nice to be here tonight on such a cozy night. It's cozy in here. And at one point, you had talked about moving me up on the agenda, but I didn't want to go outside yet, anyway. I need to warm up. And thanks for saying I did all the work, but there's a whole team of people at Ellers that are supporting your district, and there's lots of people who are involved in this bond sale. But we do have good results to report tonight. We've been talking about this for quite a while. I think my first meeting with the board on this was in maybe May or June of last year. And we've been planning this, the election that you held back in November, and now the sale of bonds. And today was the day that we took the bids on the bonds. I brought with me this Sale Day report that looks like this. Everybody's struggling with this, so I'm not going to try to use this, I don't think. I'll just talk from the report. This summarizes the results of the sale. So if you turn to the first inside page, mark page one at the bottom. We note the purpose of the bonds. The rating on the bonds, you may recall that last fall, when we sold refunding bonds for you, Moody's upgraded your underlying bond rating from AA3 to AA2, reflecting the improvement in the financial position of the district and some other factors. That rating, every time you issue bonds, that rating has to be reviewed again. So we had a conference call with them last week. Sandy didn't quite have the budget amendments finished, but she was very close, and so she was able to go over not only the actual financial results from last year, but the projected financial results for this year. And it was all very positive. We did, in, we've kind of changed the format of the Sale Day reports a little bit, and we've actually included, for your information, the Moody's credit report on your bonds, starting on page six. And you may find that interesting reading. There's a lot that goes into your credit rating that's completely outside of your control, things like demographic statistics and population growth and things of that nature. And there are some things that are in your control. I'll just note on the first page, on page six there, some of the strengths that help your bond rating. One is the large tax base with above-average income indices and being located in the Twin Cities metropolitan area where there's strong employment opportunities. That's a positive rating factor. They also noted your voter-approved operating and capital levy. So the fact that you, your all three questions passed this year and passed by such a margin, which is bringing more bond proceeds that you can use for important capital projects and also more general fund revenue, those were positive rating factors. Challenges that they note in summary are all things outside of your control. Elevated dependence on state revenue sources driving recent liquidity pressures. That's going to be a challenge for every school district in the state of Minnesota. And recent liquidity pressures, they're talking about the state, they're still punishing you for the fact that the state balanced their budget by taking away cash from you. Doesn't seem fair, but that's how it works. And even though the state has now restored all those cuts in cash payments and then recent declines in tax-based valuations. We did note that with them that the preliminary figures for 2013 values show a very slight increase after, I think, five years in a row of decreases. So you should be proud of that bond rating, that AA2 bond rating. There are very few school districts in the state that have a higher rating than that. We received four bids today, this morning, and the winning bidder, the low bidder, was FTN Financial Capital Markets out of Memphis. And if you look on the next page, you see the summary of the bids we received. The true interest rate for FTN's bid was 2.4302. The next bid was from Hutchinson Shockey Early out of Chicago at 2.4991. And Robert W. Baird out of New Jersey, actually, their headquarters is in Milwaukee, but they bid it out of their New Jersey office at 2.56. And then Piper Joffrey locally here at 2.5877. That's actually pretty tight bidding and very strong bidding, I think. We note here the summary of the results compared to the pre-sale estimates that we prepared in December, and there's a bunch of statistics there. I think I'm going to cut to the notes paragraph that kind of summarizes the real impact. So the true interest cost, which is really an average interest rate of 2.4255, is well below the estimate of 3% that we used in our elections prior to the, our estimates prior to the election. All of the tax impact estimates that you publicized to the public and were on your website, they were based on an interest rate of 3%, an average interest rate of 3%. In December, in our pre-sale report, we estimated a true interest cost of 2.87%, and we came in at 2.43%. So that's a very positive trend and kind of what we've been seeing. The very last page of this report is a graph showing trends in interest rates over the last two years, bond interest rates. This is really the average rate on a 20-year bond, and your bonds go out no longer than nine years. So your bonds are much shorter and your interest rates are lower. But this is still kind of an indication of the roller coaster we've been on over the last two years with some of the lowest rates in history over, a little over a year ago. A big increase in rates starting in May into September, an increase of almost a percent and a half. And now some declines in rates, and the rates this week are probably about the lowest they have been since last summer. And so we do know that January is often a good time to sell municipal bonds, just because of some supply and demand factors, and that certainly has held true this year. We've been seeing great rates all month long. So your taxpayers will benefit from that. The total cost to taxpayers over the life of the bonds will be lower than our pre-election estimates by about $800,000 and lower than the December estimates by about $600,000. The tax levy for the current year was set based in, back in December, based on estimates. We didn't quite know where rates would be, so you can't change that levy at this point. That was consistent with our pre-election estimates, but levies in future years will all be lower than the estimates. So you'll see a little bit of a decline in your debt service levy starting next year. Closing on this issue will be February 19th. That's when you'll receive the proceeds. We do, we did bring with us a resolution prepared by your bond attorney, Tom Deans at Knutson Flynn Deans, that you'll take action on later tonight, awarding the sale of the bonds. And a few other attachments there for your information, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Is the lower?
Is the lower interest rate due to the change in the bond rating based on the estimate of 2.87 earlier versus the 2.4 we actually got?
No, we knew that. We knew your rating at the time we did our estimates in December. So it's really just based on market changes. We are seeing, and this graph here really kind of understates what's happened with the market. In December, there was kind of weak demand for bonds. People were getting close to the end of the year. Investors were reluctant to commit to buying new bond issues. And now suddenly, in January here, there's a very strong demand for bonds and lots of investor interest. And we are seeing rates probably on average, 4 tenths to half a percent lower than they were in December when we did our estimates.
And great stewardship on the board's part to get 40 basis points is okay.
That's great, yeah. I will mention, you were talking earlier about St. Louis Park grads. We are competing with the state of Minnesota bond sale today. They were starting to take bids on their bond sale today for the Viking Stadium, $400 and some million. So we thought that might make things a little worse for your bond issue. The person in charge of the state's debt issuance is St. Louis Park High School grad and former Ellers financial advisor, Kristen Hansen, who met with your board many times. And so she, I did exchange messages with her today since we both had bond sales, and she said to say hi, so.
And how did, how did her bonds do compared to ours?
You know, I'm not sure. I haven't seen the final results. They're using a little different process. They have what's called, they had what's called a retail ordering period today, and then they'll have institutional sales tomorrow, so.
Their team rating is not as high as ours right now.
Pardon me?
So their team rating wasn't as high as our rating?
Their team rating?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the credit rate, these are, those were revenue bonds too, so it's a little bit different animal. But actually, their rating is, I think the rating on those bonds is probably the same as the AA2 that you have, so.
We have a better record then?
Your record is stellar. Well, passing all three questions by 80, almost an 80% margin. That's, that's something that's really unusual.
Really undefeated. There you go, Jim. Thank you very much. This is just a great result, and we're very thrilled. So thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the, to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
In a second?
Second.
So Bruce moved and Julie seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carrie, 6-0. Now, we're up to the action part of the agenda. And the first thing on the action agenda is approval of the 2014 budget amendments. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2014 budget amendments as presented. Do we have a motion? Moved by Jim. Is there a second? Second by Ken. Any discussion?
Other than the fact, I'm sort of like these budget amendments. They keep going the right direction, at least the last couple of years, right?
Yeah. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carrie, 6-0. Next, it is recommended that the school board approve the resolution for sale of general obligation school building bonds, Series 2014A, in the amount of $14.9 million as presented. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Julie, second?
Second.
Second by Ken. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Julie.
I just always think it's great to repeat savings. And the fact that we saved $800,000, or that Ellers, or timing, whatever, saved $800,000 off of the original estimate. And that means tax levies in future years will be a little smaller than we had thought. It's always a good thing.
Just to emphasize that point, you combine that with what we saved on a refunding, and we got an incredible interest rate on that. I mean, it's been a good time to be taking a look at this and acting on it. So, I mean, it's, I forget what our refunding savings were, but there's a couple of big numbers there, I know.
Yeah, 2.4% interest is amazing, yeah.
And the fact that if it went the other way, we'd get the blame. I'd like to take the great stewardship, and I'd like to take some credit for this.
All right, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Carrie, 6-0. Thank you very much, Joel, for all your work.
Typically, they're roll call votes. Not this time? I mean, it seems to be in the past.
Thank you, Joel. Joel said if we can record how we voted, and we did, everybody voted aye. There were no nay votes, so we know how everybody voted, and we don't need the roll call. All right, next on our agenda is communications and transmittals. Karen, you want to start?
So I'll begin. Two things. I want to do a shout out to the middle school math team. They had a very successful season. After five meets, Team Narwhal placed second in the region and helped by a first-place finish in their fourth meet. Four students scored in the top 10 individually. Mitchell Van Eschen, Semu Inamandra, Sidney Hossfield, and Ryan Faber. So congratulations to them on their winning season. And I think that demonstrates Children First Asset 21: Commitment to Learning and Achievement Motivation. And then coming up on February 7th, 8th, and 9th, the music department here at the high school has their Vivaldi and Bernstein Gala. Tickets are $7 for students, $10 for adults. Friday and Saturday, the show starts at 7:00 in the auditorium and 2:00 p.m. on Sunday in the high school auditorium. It'll be a good show. I think that demonstrates asset number three, other adult relationships. Because there was a grant, I believe, by the foundation to bring in Dr. Matthew McCaffey from the U of M to work with our kids.
Actually, I have to call down the road here to Karen. Do you know how the one-act competition came out?
We had the Yellow Wall Paper presented at Holy Angels Academy on Saturday. The kids did a great job, but unfortunately, they did not go on in the competition.
But I do want to talk about that. The one-acts are a great part of the year, and the kids put on these wonderful shows. They actually are the directors. And so it's a fun part of the year. And when you see what they do, it's just incredible. And the one that went on to the competition, the Yellow Wall Paper, eh, it was a little heavy. It wasn't one you bring the little kids to. But it was, it was, it was literally moving. The walls were moving. It was just incredibly well done. They're, some of our students, a set of our students happened to be twins, and they played, the narrator narrated the other twin's part. It was just beautifully done. And so it, I'm just always impressed how every year, Jody and the team, Mr. Ruzak and the others, just bring on all these kids. And there are literally hundreds of kids who participate. So it's a fun time, and I'm not sure which number it is, but it's about the arts and about what we do. And our mission, promoting the arts, is a big deal.
I'll just repeat again that there'll be a listening session on February 3rd, which is a Monday at 6:30. Will end no later than 8:00 at Aquila. So if you've got something you'd like to share with a board member, please feel free to come to Aquila at 6:30 on February 3rd.
And I've got two items. One is a bit sad and grateful, and the other one is a little bit of amusement to end, to end our, I think, end our meeting on. And on the sad note, Ann Thomas passed away last week. And Ann Thomas and Sue Wolf together started day one here at the high school. And Ann has done other great acts of service in St. Louis Park. She ran for city council 10 years ago when Julie and I were all for running. And we encountered each other many times at the various, those various activities. And I last saw Ann this summer at a Parktacular event. And clearly, her health was not as good as one might have hoped, but her energy and her spirit and her generosity were still going strong. And so we just really want to thank Ann and extend our sympathy to her family for all that she's done for us. And I say, one of her legacies still continues to here, and that is our day one that happens every, at the first day of school that really kicks our, kicks our students off to a good start and lets them know that other adults care about them.
And I'd just like to add to that, we lost a wonderful friend in Ann Thomas. She is just a great person, great family, just very, very special. And of course, we hate to lose any of our friends. The fact is, though, Ann will live on through the foundation, through the money she raised. We used to run a, what we called the Bachtah Gala, which was for dance and orchestra and the arts. And it was just such fun. And with her organizational skills, she will continue to live on in our, in spirit and in memory of this high school.
And then on a more upbeat note, coming back to where Mr. Met started us with school closings. When school closed last week, within 45 minutes of one of the closings, one of our brilliant freshman students had already posted a poem online. And I think it's worth reading as we close and look at another closing for tomorrow. And it's "The Night Before Finals" by Elise Bargman. Have you seen this, Rob?
I have not.
And it's, it's within 45 minutes, it's creative. And even if the facts may or may not be all totally correct, the essence of it rings true. All right?
Where was it posted?
On Facebook, of course. That's what I heard, anyway. "Twas the night before day two of finals, when all through the town, the high schoolers were studying, not making a sound. The Facebook chat bar was absent of dots of green, since one must prioritize when one is a teen. Their younger siblings watched them, filled with fears, for that would be them in a few short years. Then Mama dragged the kids away and put them in bed, because her normally sane teen is not currently right in the head. When out in the kitchen I heard that phone ring, I sprang from my seat to go answer the thing. Away from my desk I flew like a flash, and into the kitchen I promptly dashed. I heard on the phone a voice familiar to me, the automated voice message system of the city of SLP. The computer lady then said a phrase that relieved all my sorrow, for grades, for grades K through 12, there is no school tomorrow. Upon realizing the meaning of her words, I released all my dread. I was so sleep-deprived, I could soon rest my poor head. More rapid than eagles the Facebook posts came, and they all whistled and shouted, and I did the same." Isn't that great? I'll give this to Rob. And so on that note, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ken moved in a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.